You ready? Let's do it.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox. Beria Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Excellent. Would you all please join us for the collective allegiance?
There's links to the flag of the United States of America and to the Fruity Pebbles for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, a lot of exciting things up front here. So first up, I'm going to hand it over to you, Sarah, to give us your report.
Hello, everyone. So first off, all of our fall sports are wrapping up. We had a lot of success in the fall over all the sports at BHS. So first, girls volleyball is advancing to the super sectional tomorrow. Boys soccer won regionals. Boys football played in the first round of the playoffs. Orcasus had their first show in October. And then, of course, girls golf as well. We are all looking forward to supporting our upcoming winter sports and showing school spirit across all the sports. Student council has some events planned for the school and community with the holiday season approaching, such as staff appreciation, community outreach events, promoting school spirit, and also starting to plan for homecoming 2022. Finally, something else I'd like to share is the accelerator groups in the business incubator program are continuing to promote their products among social media and across the student body. Some of these groups are communal mind, dog wear, sustain style, community butler, tech tutors, and sitter hub. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to show you off, but both the boys and girls cross-country teams are going to state this weekend. We want to cheer them on.
That's right.
But congratulations to all the sports teams because we've really done well.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions or comments for Sarah? All right. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay. We have a lot of fun things coming up. Next up, we've got a couple of recognitions. So may I just turn it over to you, Dr. Hunt?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McWilliams.
Details, details.
You're good.
Evening. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening to present a few groups of students. We're to start off with our national merit semifinalists. Just to recap, a national merit semifinalists are based on a qualifying exam known as the PSAT. Our students take that mid-October. So we're going to celebrate students tonight that took the test a year ago and have a national qualifying exam score for that test. And just to highlight this, there are national merit semifinalists, and they're filling out an application, actually have filled out an application, to become national merit finalists. And then there's another group of students that are known as national merit commended. So as a group at Barrington High School, this class has about 5% of the total population is part of the national merit scholarship program, which is really pretty impressive, very impressive. So congratulations to this whole senior class. And we're going to spend a few moments here celebrating eight of those members. Kind of building off of something from last year and trying to work on a few of my skills, I did a little video editing with the students and gave them an opportunity to introduce themselves. And then we'll call them up and have them greet the board for a moment. Just as a little aside, for those of you that have been board members in the past, we do ask the students to pick something that represents them as an individual. So it might be a Harry Potter house, or it might be a book, might be a sandwich. Sometimes it's a candy bar this time of year. This group chose their favorite cereal. So with that, I'm going to ask Janine to press play.
Hello, I'm Sophia Kai, and my favorite cereal is Corn Pops. First of all, I'm incredibly grateful for all the educational opportunities I've had at Barrington over the past few years. I learned so much, and I've been able to explore and discover all the new interests and ultimately nurture a love of learning, which I hope to carry with me well beyond my time at high school. I'm also very thankful for all the support I've had from my teachers at Barrington, as well as my family. They've all helped mold me into the person I am today. And with their support, I've grown as a person, and I hope to continue my growth in the future.
My name's Sia Joshi, and I'm really honored to be a national merit semifinalist this year. A little bit about me, I started my education here in Barrington at Girl Brown Elementary School, and then I moved to Prairie Middle School, and I'm now a senior here at Barrington High School. My favorite cereal is Fruity Pebbles. I would even say that the Fruity Pebbles Cocoa Pebbles argument of elementary school is what got me interested in public speaking, and more importantly, arguing. I continue my love for public speaking and arguing here at the high school on the Lincoln Devils debate team. I'm also a member of STEM-related clubs at the high school, and I'm hoping to pursue a career in medicine. My biggest inspiration throughout my academic career have definitely been my parents. For as long as I can remember, they've always told me to never settle for less, and it really guided me to the point I'm at today. I'm really grateful to have received this achievement, and I'm looking forward to the success for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hewitt. I went to Rose Elementary School for two years and Huff for three. I am a robotics sport member, and I really like building robots.
Hi, my name is Priya McKim, and I would say that my favorite cereal is Cinnamon Tarts Crunch. I'm very grateful for the countless of opportunities that Barrington has provided me with throughout my years. I've been able to grow both personally and academically through my experiences here at the high school. I would like to thank all of my teachers for helping me on my academic journey, and my family for their constant support and guidance. I'm confident that my educational experience here at BHS will help me continue to succeed in my future endeavors.
Hello, my name is Ethan Peake, and my favorite type of cereal is raisin bran. I really like all the different flavors and textures that you can get in just one bite. I'm a proud student at Barrington High School and a national merit semifinalist. I come from Barbara Rose Elementary School, attended Prairie in sixth and seventh grade, and Station in eighth grade. I attribute much of my success to my supporting teachers, loving family, and great friends who keep me in tune and super motivated. At the high school, I'm the president of DECA, as well as an all-state tennis player. I plan on studying exercise science in college with the hopes of becoming an orthopedic surgeon. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ethan Park, and I would like to first and foremost thank my parents for caring about me and my education, and also for instilling the work ethic and motivation that I would need for achieving this kind of thing. I would also like to thank all my teachers here at Barrington for making all the content worth learning and fun.
Hi, my name is Priya Shaw. First and most importantly, of course, my favorite cereal is Honey Bunch of the Pearls. I'd also like to thank my family for continuously supporting my education and for being my lifelong role model. I also want to extend my gratitude towards my teachers at Barrington, who are so passionate about their courses and dedicated to my academic success. The Barrington community has provided me abundant resources, support, and guidance to keep me pushing forward, especially during this pandemic, and I hope to continue my academic success in the future. I look forward to giving back to my community and becoming a positive role model myself. Thank you.
And I would say that my favorite cereal is the Kirkland Signature Organic Ancient Grains Granola. Quite a mouthful, but I think that it is very reflective of my character. Ancient in its title suggests it's, I am an old soul, I am very enlightened. It's got five different grains in it, and I am also very multifaceted in my involvement in Barrington High School here. And most of all, it's resilience against the soggyness of the milk also is a quality that I most admire. And at Barrington High School, Barrington High School, my years here has taught me a lot of things, mostly adaptability, adapting to new teachers, new environments, because I did spend half of my years, half of my childhood, in a different country. I was born in China. And so I know a lot about these educational differences in perspective and approaches. And I am very gracious to be here at Barrington.
All right, congrats. Congratulations to our semifinalists. If you'd like to come on up and greet the board, I'm sure they'd like to, love to give you a fist bump or just say hello, and then we'll take a quick picture if that's okay?
Let's do it. Great job, guys.
Yeah, really nice. Congratulations.
Way to go. Awesome job.
Yeah, congratulations.
Wish I'd taken notes on the cereal.
We may have to bring cereal next week.
Yeah.
There's no wrong way or right way. Go your way. That's perfect. Congratulations. You guys can sit along this way. We're going to go right by.
Go behind us. Do you want us to sit?
Yeah, why don't you sit?
We sit when they can stand.
And then make the scones together.
But then scoot in.
Yeah, everyone scoot.
Squeeze in, squeeze in.
Right in the center here.
Do the chairs still?
Right there.
Even if it's a table?
Are you good?
All right.
Smile with your eyes.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Can I get everybody to look over here? I'm going to give one for my own personal smile. Very good. Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
So thank you all very much, and thank you to the parents. I know we've got a lot of parents in the room, too. Thank you for your dedication to these students as well.
I certainly, as a new superintendent, would never have predicted favorite cereal, but certainly shared some insight. You know, obviously, it takes a strong intellect to achieve at such a high level, but I think what's underestimated is the amount of work and commitment that it takes to be that successful. So just commend all of our students, and it's not done alone. It's certainly done with support from parents and teaching staff along the way. So congratulations to all, and thank you for being here tonight.
We are not done with our recognition, though. So Steve, are you going to continue with the recognitions?
We're not done with recognitions. I am going to play past the microphone. I'm going to ask our high school counselor, Tim Martin, Mr. Tim Martin, to come up and present the state champion girls golf team. Thank you, Steve. Thanks a lot. We're proud to bring Dr. Hunt his first state title here in the district, and a team title and individual title. So we'll kind of start down at this end. We've got Bridget Butler, sophomore. Bridget, stand up. You can. We have seniors Sophia Solkar, second in state this year. We have Simran Singh, Anna Simran. We have Ashley Singh, great job. We have Leah Gadas. We have the 2019 and 2021 state champion, Mara Davis. Anis. And last, but certainly not least, Sydney Torada. We just love to thank, we want to thank the board for your support, the community. McWilliams, our principal, Mike Optus, our A.D. These girls were amazing, setting the, actually, the state record with the lowest score ever with a 595 as a team after four second-place finishes in a row. And last year, we didn't have a state. They were really dedicated. I can't say enough about them, how hard they worked. And credit to them for just an incredible two days at state. And so ladies, awesome job. Of course, we have Lori Murray, my assistant. I'm so sorry, my amazing assistant Lori Murray. Without her, all the girls know this would all fall apart very quickly. So she is the entire key. Can we get another picture?
Yes.
Can we get a picture also, maybe?
Sure.
Is there collective favorite cereal?
Cinnamon Tarts Crunch did sound good when I heard that, so thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Guys, give blessings. Guys, give blessings.
The same thing. Here we go, same thing.
Oh, now you got to do a picture.
Congratulations.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, whatever. Get that limelight. We know how you are.
How can you top this, Sandra? There's no topping this.
You can't. Absolutely. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
A little autistic, Ms. Williams. Let's do it right. I concur.
You're not smiling.
Teeth are nosy, right?
Over here.
All right.
Oh, sorry. All right.
Congratulations.
All right, so unfortunately, it does conclude our recognition portion of the evening. So thank you again for all of the students and the parents and the teachers and staff that have helped. If you'd like to leave and not stay for our great next report of the meeting, please feel free to do so. Thank you.
Some double breaths. I'll get some in a little bit. The students.
I will do that.
You want to rush the door?
I could rush the door, but I suspect they're going to start without me then.
We'll give them just a minute more.
It's all good. It's all good.
That's up in my report, so. I just have a couple of things. First, I'll just mention, don't forget to change your clocks this weekend. A lot of people are going out, so don't forget to do that. Upcoming in the next couple of weeks, there's a couple of opportunities for community members and parents and others to hear about the designs that are being finalized at Countryside and Roslyn Road and Sunny Hill and Barrington High School. So be on the alert for those because you can attend via Zoom. It's a great opportunity to see and give your input. And board members, you got a memo. If you are planning to attend, please go and sign up on the Google Doc, I think it was, and then two board members will be allowed to participate, and then others can listen in. Okay? So last week, Dr. Hunt and I were guests at the BayCog meeting where we shared board priorities, provide an update on the referendum construction and some recent legislations. We had a good dialogue, and it was good to be with the BayCog group. Again, I'll remind, next week is actually now the virtual town hall for the state legislators. That'll be Wednesday, November 10. And that's with the Chamber of Commerce, so please register online if you plan to attend. Janine sent us an email. And tonight, at 8:00, wherever we are on our agenda, we will pause and we will have a public hearing for the public to give us their feedback on the IASB resolutions that we will be voting on next week, or next meeting, excuse me. Just a reminder to please review those resolutions, and we'll be voting to agree or to disagree with the recommendation of IASB on those. We're voting on those today. We're not voting today, we're listening today. That's my thought, okay. And then on the November 15?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, excuse me. Sixteenth is the next meeting, and we will vote then. Okay, you will continue to hear throughout this meeting that a priority of ours is to keep our schools open safely. In-person learning is a very high priority. So with that, it's time for public comment. We do have about six people signed up here for public comment. So I'll read our introduction. We have now come to the portion of our meeting. We set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions, and in accordance with public board policy 2230, we ask you to state your name, elementary attendance area, and your relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also are going to be limiting your comments to three minutes, and the countdown is up on the screen. We will not allow the board's business to be impacted, and we will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with board equity statement that states we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities and abilities of the voices of our diverse school community. And per our board policy, we also state that the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property. No person shall strike, injure, threaten, harass, or intimidate a staff member, board member, sports official, or a coach, or any other person. They will not impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with the school activity or function. If someone has spoken and represented your views, feel free to stand, and you don't need to repeat the comments. And we ask that any actions do not delay or impede the work of the board. And as a reminder, this is not a conversation. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. Okay, so with that, Sophia Eman is up first. Yes, please come up to the table.
Hi. Is this on already?
Yes. Okay.
This is my first school board meeting, believe it or not, since I was a student at Barrington High School not too long ago. So clearly, we're new to the area. My name is Sophia Eman.
Yeah, thank you.
My husband is here with me, Tom Eman. We have six children. Five are in Barrington schools, three are at Countryside, and two are at Prairie Middle School. We just moved to Barrington last year during COVID shenanigans, and just wanted to state our beliefs. I'm sure this has been discussed many times. We have not been to a board meeting yet, and I don't know what the stance has been. But we just wanted to show our concerns that we would really like to make masks optional for students in the Barrington 220 district. We feel that there are strong medical health concerns, and definitely there will be long-term mental health concerns with children wearing masks. I'm sure that both advocates and opponents of the mask mandates will show you arguments on both sides. The long-term effects of wearing a mask all day are still just unknown. I feel that there's so much anxiety and fear just with COVID itself, and then also among children, being afraid to play with other kids, fear of getting other children sick, fear of other children getting them sick. This is all stuff you probably know. I'm not going to hash this like this is the first time anybody's heard any of this, but just wanted to show our position in the district with many kids that'll be going through all of the Barrington schools. Among our own children, we have a lot of different examples that many people probably don't have to deal with. We have six kids with an autoimmune disorder. They're immunocompromised, yet we're still asking for masks to be optional. Our kids have already been sick multiple times throughout the start of the school year. We just, all eight of us got over strep infections two weeks ago. We're still getting sick with masks on. I understand that we have to follow the governor's orders, but I just want it to be known where we stand. We have a four-year-old that is in a private school at Barrington, and they follow the community Barrington 220 guidelines. He doesn't even talk at school because he has a mask on. He feels suffocated. He only talks when he's outside for recess. We have an 11-year-old that cannot go to school if his mask doesn't feel right. Many children feel as if they're suffocated. Imagine someone holding a hand on your nose and your mouth. That's what it feels like for these children. Children with glasses, they can't see, their glasses are fogging up. Sorry, I'm getting emotional, but it's just very important for everyone to understand that even though your kids may seem fine, they're not. So we just wanted to, sorry, just ask you guys to consider the position of all the parents. Maybe we can do a survey where we can ask parents in the community to just stand up, because if our voices aren't heard, I just don't want to be compliant and have our children suffer. I'm sorry, thank you. Sorry, the countdown is hard to go through. Thank you very much.
Next up is Margot Dallstream. Visual aids today. I'm so excited.
Hi, my name is Margot. I'm a school district parent, and we are a member of the Huff Elementary area. Earlier today, I wrote a letter to everyone on the board and Dr. Hunt about my continued concerns about potential vaccine mandates. And thank you, Dr. Hunt, for your very speedy reply and confirming that you and the board have not yet engaged on discussions about mandating vaccines. But since that engagement may happen between now and the next meeting, or the mandate might come from state or national leadership, I would still like to make public comment. It's my hope that you and the board will join the effort in fighting for parents, students, teachers, and staff to have a choice about getting the vaccine or not. Please fight against a vaccine mandate for students because emergency use authorization does not equal approved. Even on the FDA panel, members voiced concerns that the trials for children were short, only three months, and the data on this young age group was scant. Another epidemiologist and public health expert said Pfizer's study was too small to detect any potential risks of myocarditis associated with the vaccine. Please don't mandate vaccines for anyone, because even among older people, there is risk to the vaccines. I did a Verz search yesterday on this, and for all vaccines, all dates ever recorded, there's a total of 1.3 million adverse events, and that includes deaths. Of those, 48%, more than 647,000 of them, are from the COVID-19 vaccines. Please don't mandate vaccines because their efficacy is debatable, especially as it relates to death for people under the age of 14. And here's where I have my visual aids, and I have an assistant here who'll help me show the chart to the people behind us. So the first chart was from a study in UK that showed case rates by vaccinated and unvaccinated at all age categories. And this is alarming, but questions I would have about the under 18 is, are they testing the kids who are vaccinated or just those that are unvaccinated? And of those who tested positive, how many of those are asymptomatic or false positives? The second chart is more telling, though, though. For the same age band, it shows the COVID deaths in each age category. And for under 18, it doesn't even show up in either color, whether you're vaccinated or not. So the mortality is very, very small regardless of vaccination. And Dr. Ryan Cole, a Mayo Clinic-trained pathologist, recently stated that countries with high vaccination rates are having super-high COVID spikes and hospitalizations. Please join us in our fight. There was a Kaiser survey that showed 63% of parents would not vaccinate, at least at initial availability. Can I add one more comment? Dr. Ben Carson was asked on Sunday if he agrees with the CDC decision to vaccinate children from 5 to 11, and his response was absolutely not. And in the letters, I included a copy of the transcript from that interview.
Thank you so much. Next up is Samuel. Next up is Samuel Bernstein.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Sam Bernstein. I'm a parent of three children in the Countryside District, and this is my first time speaking before the board, and we recently moved to Barrington. In addition to being a parent in the district, I am a partner at an international law firm that represents, and I personally represent medical devices and pharmaceutical companies, including on clinical trial work, regulatory and compliance issues. Today, I'm speaking to you today, obviously, on my own behalf, not on their behalf, but I wanted to talk to you today about COVID vaccination of children ages 5 to 11. First, I want to say that we owe a great debt of gratitude to pharmaceutical industry for saving many lives from this COVID pandemic. However, today, I'm appearing before you to implore you not to implement a COVID-19 vaccine mandate for children ages 5 to 11, and to decline to follow the recommendations of the CDC currently for vaccinating children ages 5 to 11. Implementing a vaccine mandate will, as I'll discuss today, likely, based on the number of children in this district, give probably two children, perhaps more, myocarditis. We don't have great numbers for children ages 5 to 11 because, as the prior speaker, the study was only about, actually, less than 5,000 children. And on average, according to data found by the FDA in the September 21st, 2021 Emergency Use Review Memo, in the FDA's analysis of the Optum database, the estimated excess risk of myocarditis is 200 cases per million among the vaccinated males in the 16 to 17-years-old. We don't have great data for younger children, but it appears increased risks are higher for children. I want to just quote some factual information for you from various FDA documents today. I'm happy to, after the board meeting later this week, provide you with any written copies of these FDA documents. I quote from the FDA fact sheet for healthcare providers administering the Pfizer COVID vaccine. "Post-marketing data demonstrates increased risk of myocarditis and pericarditis particularly within seven days following the second dose." From the September 21st, 2021 EUA Review Memo post, EUA surveillance reports received by the FDA and CDC indicated serious risk for myocarditis and pericarditis following administration of the primary series of BNT162B2. In terms of the studies that have been done to date, typically, it takes eight to 10 years for a vaccine to be approved by the FDA. Here, we have a very short period of time there have been studies, but typically, for most vaccines, there's a lot of data available over many years to validate whether or not there are long-term side effects. And here, we've had a very small trial over a very short period of time without great safety data. To tell you the truth, we need longer studies, larger populations. And so, I just wanted to implore the school district to hopefully not advance a vaccine mandate for children 5 to 11 until we've had adequate data establishing the safety of this vaccine, like we have for every other vaccine that this district mandates. Thank you so much.
Up is Hugh Brady.
Ready? Good evening. My name is Hugh Brady, and I live at 272 Jewels Road in Inverness in District 15, and I, not in District 220, I'm about a block outside of District 220. And I'll be making a similar presentation to the District 15 and District 220 school boards. I'm here to urge the school district, when you renew the bus contract or put it out to bid, to require the bus company to provide at least some electric school buses. The climate crisis is upon us, and I think it's incumbent on all of us individuals and government agencies and private businesses to do everything we can to mitigate the climate problem and to do everything we can to reduce the use of fossil fuels, which, you know, spew carbon dioxide and nitrous oxide and so on into the atmosphere. An additional reason to go with electric school buses is that while the initial upfront cost is much more than a diesel bus, they're certainly a lot less expensive in the long run because of regenerative braking. Brakes last about three times as long. The cost of electricity for to fuel the buses is about a third to a quarter of what it costs to refuel a bus with diesel, depending on the cost of diesel, which is certainly going up. In addition, electric school buses don't need oil changes, they don't need fuel pumps replaced, they don't need injectors cleaned, and so on. So, you know, over the long haul, the maintenance costs are much less, and you certainly would save a lot of money on that. And again, as I said, I hope everyone will do their part, school boards included, to reduce the impact of fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh. Next up is Marcia McClary.
Thank you. I'm Marcia McClary. I have five kids, ages 7 to 17, and you've heard from me before. Thank you. For those of you who respond to my emails, it really makes me feel great that you guys are reading all the data and information I pull together. I spend a massive amount of time on this, and I do it because I love all these kids dearly, and I want the best for them, like all of you. A couple of things. You know how I feel about the vaccines, if you read my emails, similar to Mr. Bernstein. I completely agree. The data was only based on a few months of information, and it is completely unfounded, in my opinion, and reckless and unethical to mandate or push these vaccines on any of our children. And I would be shocked and appalled if District 220 did that, and my email should have been clear on that. I watched the entire FDA meeting start to finish, took the day off work. I sent the link to you. You can listen to the advisor comments yourselves and the cautions and the very hard time they had with this vote because they had to make it available for even the few kids that would want it and the parents that would really want it. They had to make it available. They in no way wanted it to be pushed on everybody. You can hear all their comments and the cautions. The media took it, ran with it, and the story sounds different out there. I don't know why that's happening. I don't want to guess, I'm not going to speculate, but it's really, really disturbing, and I hope you can all see through that. So, that being the case, I mean, there's only 16 kids in this trial that got COVID, okay? 16. Tell me if that's adequate data. You guys are all smart people. I don't think so. Three kids in the control arm, I'm sorry, three kids that thought the vaccine got COVID, too. Three kids. Not enough data for me. Safety-wise, three months of data, not enough data. Most of the other vaccines, Barry knows this, decades of data. MMR, anybody who says that these kids have gotten all these vaccines and they're okay with it, they've been decades of safety testing. It's totally apples and oranges. Polio, measles, mumps, rubella are much more serious for children. The risk-benefit decision is completely different. So, anybody who says that kids take vaccines now, it's totally apples and oranges. We can't compare those. And the other thing, I did send you guys another email. It's really, I did a comparison to the flu incidence, seasonal flu, and we are actually far below that incidence with COVID in District 220, and we have been for most of this time. I'm really wondering what the end game is here, guys. Like, I would question the state and what we're doing here because I don't know how it's going to get a lot better. I mean, we've got to learn to live with this, and so I implore you to really have a robust discussion about these metrics and see what's going on. I sent you guys a ton of data today, or yesterday, sorry, and since I'm out of time, my biggest disturbing thing is the 3,800-plus days out of school for quarantine these kids have missed, of which the majority is healthy. We want to keep the kids in school, and I think if I were to pick one thing, that is the number one. These kids being out of school without access to their classes is very disturbing. And then beyond that, you know, we roll with masks and this other stuff, but that is, I think, the most disruptive. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Marcia. And next up is Lauren Davis.
Lauren Davis, and I'm a resident in District 220, where my youngest son got a great education. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you all for your service. This is a hard job, and I appreciate that you are all very dedicated public servants working for the betterment of our community. Last board meeting, there was a discussion on the transportation and the issues regarding whether or not to extend the current transportation bid or to go out to bid. So, one thing they mentioned, too, is a lot of buses are very old, and so they probably have to purchase some more from your transportation supplier. And I also remember that you pay for the fuel, and that cost is very high. I don't remember what the number was. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the board to consider bidding for, asking for, electric buses. I recently attended a webinar by the Environmental Law and Policy Center regarding electric school buses, and it was fascinating. The speaker was from Oxford Community School District in Michigan. Oxford is a group of 12 schools. They cover 77-plus square miles, they have over 5,000 students, and they've been using electric buses for about a past year. The representative shared their experience of success with the electric buses. And the buses were from Lion Electric in Joliet, Illinois. The school district had been concerned about health impacts of the children with the diesel fuel, and then their other concerns were safety, savings, and range. So, what they found out, decreased pollution, they loved how clean the buses were, the range was 125 miles, the drivers preferred the buses. They had no problems with cold weather, which is something we have to think about. They didn't have any problems with control or skidding on the roads. They actually used it as an educational tool for their children, the kids. And then they found the cost to be about eight cents a mile to run the buses, where the diesel cost was 35 cents per mile. So, they had an estimated savings of approximately $1,200 per quarter. And then another thing, I did check with somebody in the solar industry who recommended that maybe you could do a solar array that would work for something like this. And additionally, we have recently passed the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, which I believe there's money in there for the schools and for solar. So, there's a great opportunity here to look at this. So, I'd ask the school board, again, to look at this and offer this sincerely for, to go out to bid. There's a lot of money that could be saved in the long run. Of course, there's more upfront, but more long-term. And I have to thank you again for letting me speak and for all your service.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, that concludes our public comment. We will open up the hearing at 8:00 for additional public comment. Next up, Dr. Hunt, is your report.
Good evening. Thank you. Just a couple of things. We're going to talk about transportation later, continue the conversation we started last week, and I know, maybe not specific to buses, but I know the facility and Nicole and Dave, and we're looking at solar and different options for alternative energy. So, appreciate those comments tonight. As I move into my report this evening, I just want to give you a few updates district-wide. Obviously, COVID-19 continues to be part of our reality in schools. And we made a few modifications this week that I wanted to address publicly at the board meeting and are dealing with, you know, a couple of issues throughout the district that I wanted to speak to tonight. First of all, we were having some inconsistency in reporting of cases, positive cases in buildings. So, we shifted to, through building newsletters, kind of linking to the district dashboard. I'd encourage everyone to utilize the district dashboard in monitoring cases if you have an interest in that. You can monitor them by, you know, every single day or by week, and principals will send that link out via their newsletter, and that will be consistent throughout the district. So, we wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, we have dealt with an increase in cases at Roslyn Road in our elementary school that, you know, has kept our staff pretty busy over the last week or so. I would commend our staff, our nursing staff, Beth Jones, just the amount of time and energy that goes into manage these situations is tremendous, and they've done a fabulous job with this. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Kirk and his staff at the building. We, again, have seen an increase in cases, positive cases in the building. One of the things that was questioned was our involvement of Lake County Health Department. And I think it's important for our Board of Education, our committee, to know Lake County Health Department's involved on a daily basis with pretty much everything that we do. So, whether it's a positive case and we're reporting a red cap to them, or it's a unique situation that we're talking through contact tracing and close contacts, they are actively engaged in all of the conversations regarding any potential quarantining or situations within our school. So, they have been involved in this situation and are, you know, providing us guidance. We have successfully implemented the test-to-stay protocol, and along with shield testing, I think part of this is, we are trying to identify and recognize when we have positive cases, take the appropriate measures to minimize that spread. There is also action at the building, or activities at the building, that Mr. Kirk has put in place just to enhance mitigation to get through this difficult time. The letter went out to parents on Monday, I believe, of this week, and it talked about different mitigations, you know, re-engaging in the conversations about the three Ws, washing your hands appropriately, social distancing, increasing that in classrooms, looking at how we go about creating more space, grouping students in lunchrooms and recess, to just really provide an opportunity for the best opportunity to limit case and limit spread. Again, this isn't a decision we make independently on what happens in the school. It's a collaborative decision, and it has been that way with the Lake County Health Department. So, I wanted to pause there and see if the board had any questions. I know we've received a few communications on this, and I'd like you to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have regarding Roslyn Road.
Dr. Hunt, would you clarify for us and for the community, the number of positive cases currently and the number in quarantine? I know that there are a bunch of different numbers being thrown around.
Yeah, so the week of October 25th, leading up to last week, we had 14 positive cases. 26 students were in quarantine as of last Friday. Really, there was a central core of nine that we looked at and worked with the Health Department, specific to a certain grade level in classroom, that we made the decision to move for these additional mitigations.
And as I understand it, students are beginning to come out of quarantine this week.
So, I believe towards the end of this week, some of those students will come back out of quarantine.
Does that qualify as an outbreak, 14 positive cases, or does that terminology?
Yeah, it has not been defined as an outbreak at this point, and honestly, that definition and really what does that mean kind of moves a little bit. Again, we work hand in hand with the County Board of Health on what appropriate steps should be taken.
But test-to-stay is working, as it should, then, in that classroom that's been affected?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, when we look at the district dashboard, we see the number of cases, the number of positives is in one line, right, which is separate from those in quarantine? So, those in quarantine may or may not have been tested positive.
Correct. And the number of quarantines, the students in test-to-stay are included in that quarantine number.
Thank you for answering my next question.
So, there's students that would show up in that quarantine number that are actually in school.
So, if it says 25, and then it says the number in quarantine, test-to-stay is four, that means there's really 21 that are home and.
That's correct. That's correct.
Hopefully, that helps the community understand how to read those charts a little better.
I was going to say, we know the number of cases with the Health Department and the nursing staff. Do we know where these are coming from? I mean, are we assuming that they all caught them in that classroom at Roslyn, or was it just a birthday party that a bunch of them were at on a Saturday, and they happened to all be in the same class?
I think you know medically, it's almost impossible to tie where these, you know, connections are made, and.
But I felt like we were just trying to get a better idea.
Yeah, so they haven't, you know, to my knowledge, and Beth, jump in if I'm incorrect, they have not made kind of that link between students. We did have one on the bus that we believe linked to one student and then back into the classroom, but it's really, really challenging to make an assumption that it happened in school or out of school.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to make it clear that we're not sure this is actually, it's a coincidence or that it was all because of that one classroom. There may, you know, there may be other extenuating factors that we don't know.
I do want to clarify, there were, there have been a couple of close contacts that did test positive as just as of today, so that, you know, were in another classroom where they're close to each other. And so, yeah, there have been some connections at school, but the students who are in quarantine that are out of school and are not counted in the test-to-stay are usually because they, you know, tested, or they were around somebody who tested positive outside of school, and we don't have any control over that. So, but the in-school students were testing.
Okay, so I guess I'd assume that it was like a lunch situation or something. So, the children who are not eligible to test-to-stay, it's because they were contact-traced outside of school.
Most of the students in that situation are because they have. Most of the students in that situation are because they have been a close contact to somebody who was positive outside of school. Yes.
And so I'm assuming since this is concentrated in one class, do we have a, what's the remote learning process?
So with students that are on quarantine, they have the opportunity to have synchronous education after a 48-hour period of time. So that would be the model that they're using. And I should say it's asynchronous and synchronous.
Was there consideration to quarantine that class since there was a lot of students in that class? Is that a discussion with the Health Department and with the school and with the district?
So with each one of these cases. Yeah, with each one of these cases, that conversation happens between the Health Department and the school district. And I think the response is, we're effectively using test-to-stay. The reason we have that in place is to keep kids in school and keep moving forward.
If I understood, some of the kids who tested to stay then tested positive?
Correct.
So I think parents are concerned from the emails I've received that my kid could be the next one that could be next to someone who's test-to-stay. I think people are considering that, and they're feeling like we don't have an option that's helpful to them to help those students learn while they're home.
Well, I think you probably saw some of our responses to those. Per the resolution adopted by the state school board, we have an obligation to provide asynchronous learning, virtual learning, to students that are under quarantine. And those who are not, if you're not under that definition, we're to provide in-person education.
And we have all of our mitigation efforts in place?
Correct. And we've increased them.
And more.
So in partnership with the Health Department, we've determined that it's safe for the students to continue learning in the classroom where there were many positive cases as long as they're testing to stay? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Not to nitpick at these numbers, but I just want, I think we're all getting. So we currently have 14 kids who are positive. We have 26 kids quarantined, but of those, you're saying 12 are currently testing to stick. So meaning.
I don't know if that's accurate in that specific classroom. I don't know if you're talking about the building or the classroom.
So I'm talking like, let's just take Roslin. Currently, 14 students are positive.
You're looking at the chart?
Yeah, I'm looking at the chart. 26 are in quarantine, 12 are testing to stick.
Correct.
So you don't add the 26 and the 12? In fact, you subtract the 12 from the 26?
That's correct.
So really, the only kids quarantining right now are currently the 14 children that have tested positive? Because 26 minus 12 is 14.
But are they quarant, are all of those tested positive, I guess is the question? I would think not, or they would be showing up in the positive cases.
Well, that 14 is a cumulative number for the week. I don't know if we're looking at the same part of the same chart here. That's a cumulative total for the week.
So I guess maybe you're saying I should look more at a daily basis than I get it? Because I'm looking at one cumulatively and one not.
Correct.
I understand. So it's really four as of today, let's just say the 29th. Four are positive, 26, and really 14 are in quarantine.
Yeah, and remember, a positive today means quarantine for 10 days.
Yeah, gotcha.
I think it's 14 that are in quarantine and have tested positive, right? Is that what the chart is saying? Because there's 14 totals positive cases at Roslin right now.
Over the week.
Over the course of the week. But you have to look at it on a daily basis. If you look at it on a daily basis, it makes more sense.
Oh, so four positives?
Correct.
Today, not who tested positive today, but who are, who have.
Who are positive today.
Who are positive. Okay, right.
Any other questions?
So just to make sure I understood your answer a minute ago. We're not allowed to give any additional learning to the kids who are staying home because their parents just are fearful, not just, but are fearful, but don't have any contact tracing or any illness or any positive.
Yeah, so we are working with those folks right now. We had a conversation today with Mr. Kirk and tried to provide resources. But when you read our obligation, what we're required to do, that is not the virtual environment for those students.
So we couldn't provide a little bit more to help them out in this situation? Or it would be against what we're being mandated by the state, or it's kind of fuzzy?
I don't know if I'd use the word fuzzy. It's pretty clear with the resolution. I think we're trying to do the best we can under the uniqueness of this situation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Are those kids able to receive synchronous learning? The ones whose parents elect to keep them home because they're worried about in-classroom spread?
No.
Or just asynchronous?
Either through schools you seesaw, depending on what the teacher's utilizing, what makes the most sense. Or as you have children that are sick, sometimes it's hard copies picked up in the office, and you do that work and complete it at home.
But the kids who are quarantined can have the synchronous option in addition to asynchronous?
All right, well, let me just, I think the rest of these are pretty quick.
Let me finish your report.
Rest of these are fairly quick.
Okay. Can I just point out, there's nobody signed up. So if somebody meant to sign up for the 8 o'clock hearing, please do sign it out while he finishes his report.
So as was mentioned, CDC approval for the vaccination for children over five, I think is down to the director kind of signing off on that. We have tentatively scheduled two vaccination clinics, one at Sunny Hill, one at Barrington High School. So as that goes through, we will communicate that and keep those offerings open for our students. I did want to just mention, we've been having conversations. I believe this conversation took place in the district over the past couple of years, maybe stalled with COVID, about the dual-language program specific to kindergarten. As most of the board knows, the dual-language program is housed at the Early Learning Center. And we've had conversations about shifting that back into the buildings. Really, the big upside for that for kindergartners is that they have an experience at the same elementary for their whole elementary career. I think initially, this was a space concern with the district. So as we kind of move through this, we are moving forward with our demography study, looking at enrollment. If that continues to play out, as we believe it will, we will be able to make that transition from the Early Learning Center into the buildings. And we would bring that back to the board to have some conversation about. So I wanted to make you aware of the work that's going on in that area as well. And I know you have a memo regarding that.
Sorry, can I clarify these vaccination clinics real fast? I'm assuming this would only be with parental permission?
Absolutely.
And it would be open to kids ages five and up pending the.
Assuming that was the case.
Even at the high school level? This is all, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'd open them up for our students. I mean, I think the goal is, it's approved now, five and up. But if we have older students, I think we would want to include them that have an interest in getting a vaccination, include them as well.
Is it open to the whole community, or only students?
I mean, the goal is students. That's the reason for having them. But I don't think we would be turning anyone away.
Is the Lake County Health Department going to be running that, or are 220 people going to be running that?
Beth, is that through?
It's actually through, let me get the name of it. It's 8 o'clock, so I don't want to hold you up, but I'm going to grab the name.
Okay. So the vaccination clinic, hold on. Okay, so it's through school youth serving organization. And they are, they're a group that sets up for the IDPH and for the IEMA. There are representatives from that, and they work on mass vaccination efforts.
Pause on the last slide so you can.
So I guess we need to have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
No, we don't have to? Not for this one? Just a second public, okay. So.
Or a motion to pause the board meeting?
It's just part of our meeting. It's just a second public comment. It's not really hearing. I called it a hearing. It's just a second public comment. So we don't have anyone signed up? Is there anybody here that wanted to speak about the ISB resolutions? I guess.
I have a question just about Roslin Road and that being.
Maybe if you stay till the end of the meeting, we can answer your question. But we've got to finish our board business here. Okay, so there's nobody signed up, and nobody wanted to come forward on that topic. So we are going to let Dr. Hunt continue.
Can you go to the last slide? I just want to remind Board of Education, we're looking at, we had our board tour over at Grove. We have scheduled tours at Station and Prairie. And we felt now that you're really getting into construction, you needed to be appropriately dressed and armed for the tours. So we have a little gift for you to make sure you bring on for your next tour. And I assume this is required.
Is this required attire for our conversation?
Actually, you have to wear them in the meetings when you talk about rottweiler.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Keep them handy.
It's too late for Halloween.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, they do. They're so fancy.
Awesome. And safety glasses, guys. Awesome.
Some asshole. Let's take a picture of her.
When we get to that discussion item or action items, maybe.
Come on.
Thank you.
Everyone got their regular names? No?
No nicknames.
I won't tell you about my helmet. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Did it say out front with Dr. Hunt?
It's not exactly what it said.
Oh, it's not.
We'll handle that offline.
Okay, so next up is informational reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the FOIA report that we received?
Is it possible for the board to get copies of the information on the FOIA report?
I mean, it's public record. If there's a specific one, you want to let us know?
Yeah, the first one, I think is kind of interesting. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, board committee reports. I know Finance just met.
Yes, I have an update. Okay, yeah, we had an awful lot going on at the Finance Committee today. We got a recommendation to continue with the auditors that we've had for three more years. We had a good experience with them, and it's up for renewal.
Haven't we just had two years?
We just finished our third audit.
Oh, with this?
With this.
Oh, really? I thought we had our second.
So we're looking for another.
Typically, school districts will stick with an auditor for a period of time, and then after a longer period of time, switch over and get different input. But this is on three years, so this seems like the right time to keep going if we've had a good experience. They also offered us to keep the fee the same for the second year and raise it up 2.8% on the second year and 2.7% on the third year. So that was the first thing we talked about. The second thing we talked about was the upcoming levy. We had a preview of the levy. We discussed how the levy works, that this is a majority of our income for the school district, and that the recommendation at this point is to ask for the CPI, which is 1.4%, plus the amount associated with new construction, with the estimate of that being 0.5. And then to look at a 1.9%. There's also limitations on this by the state, so we couldn't get, if we asked for like 100%, we couldn't get that. The state limits us on what we would actually get based on what the actual construction is. It's kind of a tricky thing to estimate since we have four counties. So what we need to do as a board is have a presentation from Dave at an upcoming meeting. And then typically, we would have a hearing at the meeting after that and approve or not approve the levy at the meeting after that. So David suggested having a hearing on the 12/7 meeting and then approving on the 12/21 meeting. But I know there'd also been some discussion among board members of, do we need a meeting on 12/21 since that's right around the holidays and a busy time of year? So an alternative that Dave suggested was we could have the information update on the 7th and also have the hearing, did I say that right? Yeah, on the same date.
So have the information and the hearing on the same day?
On the same date.
Does that give you enough notice, though, between the initial?
Yeah, actually, I went back after our meeting, and I double-counted the dates. And we need a longer period of time in between tentative and final, just a 30-day period.
Okay.
So we would have to go 30 days after the 16th of November, which would get us to the middle of December. So we can't do it. Yeah, I just double-checked those dates.
Okay, so we can't do it all on the 12.
Yes, we can't do it all on December 7.
So we could shuffle about and have a different meeting and not have the 21st?
That's correct.
Or we could have the 21st. So we need to probably talk about that as a board or.
Maybe we can talk about that at the end of the meeting. We're talking about our next topics, maybe? Does that sound good to everybody?
And then there was another item we talked about at our Finance Committee. We talked about the DCEV funding. And how that works is what we do is we actually do a debt service extension base where we borrow from ourselves, where we get a good rate, and we save a lot of money because the fees are so much lower. In the past, we've done this in two-year decision points, where we do it for two years and divide it up. What we end up with is, we would end up with is $2.3 million to set it up, and we would have that money be the money we use for our summer projects, is what we've traditionally done. And that's mainly our roofing and our pavement. Right. So we don't need a decision at this point, but this is something that's being worked on. And we'll need to have our president and secretary sign off in the future if we're going to do this for, I think, February is when this would start, right?
I just clarified a little bit on that. This is the second of the two-year. The board has previously adopted a resolution authorizing this, so there's no formal board action that needs to happen in order to do the second tranche of the issuance. But it does require board president and board secretary approval on the paperwork. So the recommendation I made to the Finance Committee was that we move forward with this. It would be a February close. I would just work on preparing the paperwork and would have that available once we got into the beginning of the year.
So the board action already occurred in the prior year, so we don't need to have a board action and really can't have another board action because it's already been actioned.
Right, yeah.
Just making sure everybody's following that.
And since we have budgeted for this, for this year, to plan to be able to do the summer work, we do spend more than this amount on our summer projects. So some of the summer projects budget does come out of operating funds. So I just wanted to just clarify.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
It's a good thing to have a more thorough conversation on, too, like in our January meeting or committee as a whole. So my, I guess, we don't have to talk about it now, but that might be a good thing to talk about more robustly at that time.
About whether to do the spring issuance or whether to do it again for another two years. Okay, thank you.
And the final thing we had was an investment update from PMI, PMA. Yikes, busy day. So anyway, that went really well. They went through our investment strategy, what we've been doing. Unfortunately, as you probably expect, our investments are not giving much money back right now for anyone, including school districts. So that was a good update.
And that's because we don't do high-risk investments. I mean, there are some good investments out there, but that's not what we're going to use our district funds for.
Right, but even a couple of years ago, there were low-risk investments that were giving a little bit of return. And now not many investments at all are giving very much return. So, yeah. So it's something to keep in mind for our budget planning in 2022.
So if you keep backing on what you talked about, I'll talk about facilities now. Because we take the DCEV money and then we use it for our summer projects. So I just want the community to know that we regularly, first thing we talked about was playgrounds. All the schools have playgrounds. I want the community to know that we regularly check the playgrounds for condition. We want safe playgrounds for our kids. And so this is done more than regularly. And with that information, then we can kind of make decisions on which playgrounds need updates. So this past fall, we. So this past fall, we did a playground condition report and there were two playgrounds that were considered in poor condition, one at Grove and one at North Barrington. And those are going to be on our list for, let's fix them up very soon. And so we'll talk about that for an upcoming summer project. But one comment I want to make is some of these playgrounds are significantly more, are outliving their life expectancy. So I think what we're doing to take care of the investment in the playgrounds is phenomenal and I commend our, our facility staff where, you know, they're, they're predicting the playground should live about 15 years and there's some playgrounds that are, you know, 20, 25 years old and are still in good shape. So I'm, you know, I'm proud of that fact. The next thing we talked about at our facilities meeting was just the final review of the 2021 summer project recap. And as I previewed previously for our board, we came in with about a $25,000 variance to the good. When we originally budgeted for this, we were looking at about $500,000 and we're actually about $180,000 better than that. So we, we were very good with our, our money and we were very efficient and I'm proud of the fact that we came in under budget. So we basically saved on our contingency funds. There was one surprise where we had to go a little higher, but everything else came in significantly under what was expected. I want to propose to the board, just so we start thinking about this, because there's no decision has to be made tonight, thinking ahead to future summer projects. What the facilities are building and grounds people would like to do is kind of move up our timetable a little bit. What we can expect is the summer projects for 2022 that are coming up, we're going to get bids in January and February. And what we're hoping when we get to 2023, and again, that's, that we're going out a little too far, but we're hoping to get our bids next September, October, so move things up about three or four months. If we can plan early and bid early, we feel like we can get much more competitive pricing. So we can save the district money by doing this earlier. But it also means we have to commit to those funds, so it's going to be a little tighter for us to commit ahead of time, not to wait till our, our committee of the whole in January. We're going to have to anticipate ahead of time because we, we want to basically do this next fall. So just something to think about, no decisions need to be made. But as you know, we, we still need to come to you for yearly approval of the dollars, so we're not, if, if we do approve this theory, we still have to come back with the specific projects, so we're not just giving carte blanche by, by doing this.
So what we'd be asking for next fall then would be the engineering dollars, right? For those, those potential projects in the summer. Is that right?
Even earlier than that. We, we want to actually have bids next fall.
Oh, you want to have bids by next fall?
That's what we're hoping for, to move things up a little bit and we can maybe get some of these contractors a little earlier before they're, they're booked up already. So again, it's something to think about, no decisions need to be made. The last presentation, I just want to share with you again, it's kind of pie in the sky, but it's, it's, it's going to happen. We had an energy specialist, or we have an energy specialist with our, our district now. I was so impressed with him. He made a presentation to our committee talking about what we can do again to save money for the district, how we can improve sustainability. And, you know, that includes using renewable energy, but also curricular, what we can do to teach our, our students about ecology and sustainability and of course utility savings. One of the presentations he made was using solar energy and how we can potentially do something like that and how we can make it worthwhile. So I just, you know, just like a little bit of a tease, thinking about is that something we could really do and, you know, bring ourselves up to the 21st century in terms of, you know, sustainability. People presented today about electric buses and that certainly would fit into the same idea. You have to spend money to make money or spend money to save money. And just to share, there are some districts in the area who are doing solar energy. Some of them have gone out and just purchased these, these, so, these programs and then they have full ownership, but then again, you have to come up with significant upfront costs. Others have leased these and there's next to no upfront cost to do that. But then there'll be a little less savings by doing that. Someone else is going to be taking the risk, so they're going to want to make some money on the deal. So it's a whole purchase versus lease idea. Do we have the money to, to make a purchase and to take advantage of some of the taxes, tax advantages that the state and the federal government are offering? So I just wanted to share with you all, the presentation was phenomenal and we're asking him to come and actually present to the board at some point in the future, so we can all kind of hear what he has to say.
That'd be great.
But I was just so impressed with the hire of this fellow. He's, he's really up there and I, I think we have some, you know, some, some great people, great minds here in 220 to help us all move forward, so.
And they are, to me, around some facilities, when they say that the condition of the playground is poor, does that mean the whole playground needs to be replaced or is it parts of it? Like, what does it mean?
Well, they're, they're going to replace the whole playground. They, they look for certain things, whether it's rust or, or the bulbs don't look as... Now, poor doesn't mean that someone's about to, to create a lawsuit because, you know, they're about to...
Not a safety risk, right?
It's still safe or they wouldn't let the kids on the playground. But what it means is we don't, we're not optimistic that it's going to last too much longer. Let's replace it before we get into an unsafe situation.
So theoretically, it could have maybe a couple of years left that we've been saying that it should be replaced.
And I hate to say it, one of the positive things about COVID is I think all of our playgrounds gained an extra year because they weren't used as much in the last year, you know, so.
The poor condition is basically about an 18 to 24 a month advance from warning that will be replaced in the playground. That gives our, our principals and PTOs an opportunity to think about what that design might look like and work with Nicole Sotera, our Director of Facilities, as we plan for the replacement.
Any other committee reports?
Sandra, can I just mention the, I'm going as the Assembly Delegate at the IIA Conference, I'll be going to a webinar on November 10th.
Thank you.
About the IASB resolution that we'll be voting on next meeting. So if any of you have any questions about, you know, while reading through why the IASB, how they reached the recommendation they did or kind of why it's even there, let me know. I'm not sure if it's a one-way webinar or I anticipate there's going to be some way to submit some questions. So let me know if you have any questions and I will try to submit some.
I can tell you from experience, most of the webinar is process for you, how you're going to do it, how you vote. There's so many, you know, representatives involved. Every district has one vote. So we have to, of course, agree on what our vote will be and then you'll be one of, I don't even know how many districts there are in Illinois, 600, I forgot the number, but, but we're just one of, of a few of.
Eight hundred fifty-four.
And, and, and so that webinar is really to teach you what you need to do so that we can make an officially do the voting and, you know, not make it an all-day thing. So I don't think you're going to have a lot of time to go over the details.
To walk through all of the questions, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you, if people have questions, get them to you and, and we can help divide and conquer too, Erin, if, if we want to reach out to some people. I know I had a list of resolutions I had questions about, so. Thank you for that reminder.
Yep.
The only other thing I was going to mention is Referendum Committee did meet. Erin and I met with Craig and, and Bob and we went through most of what we're going to see tonight in our action items, so, and what we've already discussed with the, the meetings that are coming up. Anything else that anybody wanted to report? Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
One second.
Okay, our consent agenda, it's a little bit light. I won't have a lot to read. But we have open and closed minutes from October 19th and we have a revised personnel report, so make sure everybody notices that we have a revised report. Anybody have any questions or comments on those items? Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call. Sandra Bradford? Yes. Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Dr. Hunt, would you like to make a couple of comments about?
I would. I'd like to, first of all, thank the board for the approval this evening. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Winkelman, who will be transitioning into the Deputy Superintendent role at Barrington 220. I, I think you all know the dedication that Craig has demonstrated for this school district over many years and certainly in his role as K-12 operation. So we'll work on this transition and I look very much forward to continuing to work with Craig as we, we move the district forward, so congratulations to you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ted.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. I've been able to serve the district in a few different roles as teacher, coach, and building principal and I consider myself very fortunate to be able to continue my leadership career here in, in Barrington and serve the students and families here in 220. So thank you again for the opportunity.
We've got a couple of action items. Before you to our discussion items, first up is do we have a motion to, to approve the revised personal, professional learning. It's kind of your request for Sandra Bradford, myself.
So moved.
One second.
Okay, I'll just say, since it was about myself, if you guys remembered, I made a comment, oh, mine is a little bit less because I couldn't get into everything I wanted. Well, that next Wednesday morning, a spot came open, so my revision is to add the, one more event on Friday. So a pre-conference. So any other comments or questions? Roll call. Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford? Yes. Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have a motion to approve Countryside and Roslyn Elementary School Construction Bid.
So moved.
Do we have to put our hats on for this?
Another photo.
Are you going to give us a summary?
I would just say that there's, you know, looking at the memo and the information provided, good bid, bid coverage for these projects. As pointed out in here, roofing came in a little bit higher than expected and the decision was to make, pull that out, review scope and put that back out to bid. I know Nicole and Dave have been working on that and today, did they?
It'll, it'll, depending on if the board approves this board action to reject the roofing bids, the rebid will go out this week.
We don't, we don't have any concerns about any delays or anything?
We do have concerns about, about that and that's why we are prepped to do this as quickly as possible and then we have to see how it goes. But we just felt this was the right thing to do for our community because the pricing was significantly higher for that, so we think that the changes we'll do on this rebid will result in actually favorable pricing. It'll accomplish our goals and perhaps do it, add even a little bit of a savings as we re, as we've reevaluated this, so try to restructure it to work with the market.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So I was reading it and I think I understood correctly that there was this estimated cost and then there was the bids came in and that the estimated cost was much higher, but then the bids came in and there were some savings. Does that mean that separate than the roofing, the savings was there, if I understood correctly?
Right, so, so there's sort of the, the, we had the, we had a budget.
Right.
And the estimates associated with all of the work. And when we take a look at the bids where they came in inclusive of the roofing, we were, we were over.
Okay.
When we pulled the roofing out, now the estimate is going to go down because the roofing's not in and then, and we take a look with the bid prices and we got, we were in a favorable position for everything else where it came in better than what we were, we were projecting. And we think that with the redo on the roofing, that may even play more to our advantage.
That's what I thought. That's how I thought of it, I think, yeah.
Comments or questions? Roll call.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford? Yes. Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a motion to approve the project work order number five to Pepper Construction Company Master Agreement for Countryside and Roslyn Road Edition renovation in the amount of $7,529 and 173 cents, $173, excuse me. Let's just say that again. Seven million, 529,000, 173 dollars. Thank you for your patience on that.
A lot of money.
So moved.
Second.
That reflects, I'm assuming, what we just approved, so.
Yes.
I'm not assuming that reflects what we just approved. So any other comments or questions on that? Okay, roll call.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes. Katie Carum?
Yeah.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. That brings us to our discussion items. First up is transportation.
Close, close session, close session minutes.
You do that at the end?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, want to stay over there?
That's what I just said.
If you'd like to be there, sure, absolutely.
So, yeah.
Last month, we were, the board was providing an update on district transportation. One of the conversations was regarding the possibility of going out to bid and we had some initial discussion at the table and today we, we would like to follow up on that and have some direction from the board.
I don't have any new information for you board members since our, our last call. I, I did, you know, listen to the public comment tonight about electric vehicles and, you know, that is certainly something that is an option. The, as at least one of the speakers commented, that does tend to be a little more expensive upfront. I know that BTC on their behalf has, because I forwarded grant opportunities over to them for electric buses. There is some infrastructure that's required that goes along with that because once you purchase the bus, which is more expensive upfront, yeah, you got to plug it in to recharge it. There are other options. LNG is another option that's out there. And that is certainly something that can be done. You know, the, there aren't a lot of districts in our area that have, you know, full fleets. Some are, you know, have partial fleets or mostly are still operating diesel or gasoline. If we were to go out to bid, we could put that in. If I were going to be rebidding, I would recommend that we put that in as an alternate, simply to make sure that we understand what does it cost or what does it save in going to electrified fleet. For BTC, for them to scrap their current fleet and buy a new fleet would be an expensive proposition and fairly unlikely. For another bidder coming in, they would also have to take a look at that and assess, you know, if they're buying all-new vehicles for us, then we would see that reflected in our, in our price. It'd be really awesome to have all-new vehicles. That would be phenomenal. But I think it's more likely what they typically do is they look, they're leasing some level of new buses. If BTC lost a bid, you know, probably a successful bidder would be contacting BTC to say, do you want to unload any of your buses? Because they're going to be trying to figure out how can they, how can they provide the right equipment at the time that we're going to need it to be able to start up? And of course, having a facility somewhere for an outside bidder would be also a question in what the capabilities are. That being said, I think having a, a fleet that, that was electric or had fewer carbon impacts on our environment would be fantastic. But I think that that may be something that if we're working, whether with BTC or with a new company, that might be something that would be an evolutionary thing rather than, you know, it happens all at once. There is an option with, with solar that, that we explored with one company that we were talking to, which would provide solar panels on our school that would provide for buses to be able, or other vehicles to be able to be powered. Now, what that does do is it syphons off power that would be used as an offset within the building to be able to direct it onto the fleet. So it's always that question of, you know, which do you want to do? And when we're outsourcing, there's probably more value to us doing an internal offset rather than offset for a third, third-party provider that would require space and equipment on our, on our property to be able to charge vehicles. But there are many things that are possible, so that, just in following up on that public comment, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you.
Senator Vine, for the benefit of the audience and those watching at home, would you mind repeating from last, or last meeting, your recommendation? As well as giving some, giving your thoughts as it relates to, if we were to go to bid, why we have certain criteria, specifically the hub in Barrington?
Specifically, what was the last name?
The hub, the bus depot.
Oh, the bus depot, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, sure, certainly. So my recommendation to the board was that at this point, we look for a negotiation, a contract extension with BTC. We're dealing right now with some significant challenges on driver availability and escalation of costs, which one of the, the labor costs are a significant portion of the, of, the contracted services. So with that upward pressure, limited availability on drivers, as I've networked within my profession and including talking with some bus companies, the consensus was, this is really a lousy time to go out for bid. And I don't know what going out for bid will do for us. If we start doing, you know, we can make a lot of changes on a bid specification. We can simplify and decrease the level of service that we provide. But if our interest is in keeping the same level of service in what we're doing and potentially adding some bells and whistles, maybe adding additional video camera in particular place on the, on the bus, adding stop-arm cameras, you know, potentially electrifying part of all the fleet, these are things that will have an impact on the cost that we would see during a bid. The risk in bidding, though, is you go out to bid, there may be zero, one, five bidders. I tell you, I don't think it's going to be five. And one of the big reasons for that is we have a complicated system, and there isn't a great place to put a bus depot. That is really a significant limitation. And I have heard this from before I started in Barrington, from bus companies. Once I had, had been appointed to the position, I started talking with some, some of the bus companies I know. They're like, wow, really tough because there's really no place to put a bus depot. And the further away from the center of the district you get in terms of where you can store your buses, the more expensive it becomes to operate that fleet. And that gets reflected in the price that, that you pay. So right now, BTC is fortunate to have a spot that's very convenient. So, but there's, it's unlikely, and what I've heard is, it's really impossible. This is from some bus companies that I've talked with. It's really impossible to find a place that's very conveniently located where we'd be able to put a bunch of buses. So that's, that's a challenge. It's not a challenge that I would tell you is a reason that we should never go out to bid. But I think it is a factor that influences my recommendation to you in not going out to bid right now. I think market conditions make it unfavorable, and we don't have other mitigating factors that would really play to our advantage. The risk in going out to bid is also that, you know, we may come back. If we have one bidder that comes back and it's got a 20% increase, we're looking at a 20% increase. And, and that just is what it is. If we negotiate off of our current pricing, well, at least we know where we're starting from as opposed to anything's game. And given the upward pressure on labor costs, as I mentioned to you last time, I think BTC would likely be looking for a CPI, at least a CPI increase, which is running right now around 5%. And rates for other companies that are out there right now are higher than what BTC is paying. So I think there's the potential for more significant cost increases. And that is part of the calculus I used in making my recommendation for you.
Perfect, thank you. One follow-up question, as it relates to all that aside. You had mentioned, again, a three-year renewal, correct? Is there ever a situation where you do a less than a three-year renewal? Or is that?
Where you would do a what on?
Less than three years?
Certainly, we, our last renewal with BTC was a two-year.
Okay.
Yep, we could do a one, one-year, two-year, three-year. Those are all possibilities.
If we do pursue a contract extension, this renewal, we can, with this kind of alternate option, we can ask for, oh, can you give us pricing, upfront pricing? And cost savings if we did like 10% of the fleet electric or certain percent. So that can all be kind of wrapped in and discussed in there as well if we want to pursue.
Certainly, right, yeah, absolutely. And it'd be no problem to reach out to BTC if we were to negotiate a renewal, to ask them, tell us what that would look like. Could you do it? And what would be the cost impact for doing that? You know, either adding to or taking away from the, the price if we keep the fleet as is.
You're also looking at, we're also looking at significant fuel savings, right? Potentially, if we continue with BTC versus another company that, I can't imagine one that's closer, right? But...
Right, they're, right, from, from a, related to where the bus depot is, what we call deadhead mileage, which is the distance from wherever they keep the buses to wherever they begin or end their route. That's likely to be further than from, actually, right here next to our administrative office. So that becomes a factor in, in how other companies might price it. Because what they do is they take a look at what's, okay, what's the district? Where would we be able to service the district from? Is it one of our existing locations? Or is it not? And so there's no other company that has buses or bus depot within our boundaries. We've got a 72-square-mile district, so it's a decent-sized district. So they're starting to look, you know, further outside our boundaries. Could they do it from there? And what does that cost look like? And what's the likelihood that they would win a bid if they factor in the pricing from there? It's less convenient when you've got breakdowns, accidents, or, you know, bad weather complications. So they think about some of that. And for some companies, that may be a knockout factor. They say, oh, I don't have anything close enough. And as I look, I'm not identifying property where I think I could put one. So they may opt out of, of bidding. And I know companies in other districts and other settings that have made, done that analysis and made those decisions. Or they might say, oh, I can do it from, I've got a spot. Maybe it's in Carpenter'sville or St. Hoffman or wherever it is. And I think I can do that, and, and then here's the price. And then we, you know, we look at it and say, well, is that price compelling or not for us? Based on other bids that come in. And, you know, it's a problem, you know, because those are all going to be a little bit further away. So it will drive up the cost.
There's no current bus depot or hub other than BTC, right, in our 72-square-mile?
So I will say, from a community standpoint, after seeing the cost, the most comments I got, and I think this is, we would probably all benefit for a little background on this, is about our middle schools. And why we choose to send, split our schools and send, like, my neighbor and I live next to each other, and we go to two different middle schools. So two buses are coming down my street. So, I mean, I think, we just talked about it with the kindergarten, the dual language. Now they're all going to be housed in their home schools. Have we, and I know this all came up when we changed the times, and we had to squeeze in all these routes, and our bus, our bus costs increased. Have we ever discussed, again, A, why our middle schools are split the way they are? Or B, do they need to stay that way?
That has not been a conversation in the last three and a half years.
We did do a study.
There was a study.
There is a memo that we could distribute to the board on the cost. It was negligible cost savings if we did a study, if we split the district basically down in half, down the railroad track, if I remember right.
Yeah.
And we ran those numbers. That was a couple of years ago.
I, I think that was, that was a little bit right before I started the district. I think it was with the outside bus company, or the outside firm that came in and assessed our routing structure.
We could get that memo back, I mean, so we did do that.
Yeah, I think that would be good to know. And I, because I will tell you that every step was, multiple people asked me about that. Because it is, I will say, it's, I drive past station to get to Prairie. And I know, you know, other people drive past Prairie to get to station.
The two, the two buildings are what, a mile and something apart from each other? They're not, really not that far apart. I, I get it, I understand what you're saying, but I also saw the study that I want...
If you were talking north Barrington to Prairie, I mean, it's far. And if you're sitting in town traffic in a bus idling to get through, and, I mean, I, I just question, I, you know, I would like to know.
Yeah, so let's get that memo out, at least to...
Yeah, I can do that.
If we need to refresh it, or...
Dave, for the board's information, I have seen contracts where you have provisions where enrollment or significant programmatic changes were made would trigger or leverage reduction in cost or open the window for cost. Is that something we would pursue?
The, the way that we would approach it is, it's based on the number of routes we're running. So if we have, if we operate fewer routes, there's a lower cost. So we're not, we're not locked in, here's the price, no matter whether you run one route or 200. It, it's really a route-based pricing. So that gives us that ability to subtract cost off if we do some programmatic changes that result in fewer routes.
Decisions like that are not limited by, you know, a contract now. You're not committing to those.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So route, you know, route fluctuation can, will play out, it could play out favorably in terms of cost.
Yeah.
That's one of the things...
I guess this was a side, side issue to what we're actually talking about.
No, it was, it's all, it's all connected, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're spot on.
I think as we talked last time, one of the challenges when we, you want to make changes on routes or decrease some of the route time, and say, well, let's split the route. And, you know, every time we, we split a route, it's adding another piece of equipment, it's adding another driver, and it's adding 32 to 36 or so thousand dollars a year in additional cost to be able to do that. So that, that's the flip side, is when we go the other direction and we want to do more things, it adds more cost. But if we do less, we get the savings on the other side.
So I have a few questions. I was at the PTO Presidents' Council last week, and I brought up this issue, and they talked for about an hour. So I have a few questions that I promised I would bring back. So there was a question, is it possible to have an in-house bus company? Because there are lots of parent complaints and concerns about safety and buses that came to their PTO meetings near the beginning of school. And I think that's not uncommon. So they were saying if it was in-house, it would be our own employees. It might be nicer and better for a lot of reasons. So do you, I don't know if it's a fair question. Is there an answer of what's possible? How expensive would it be?
All right, well, well, that's, the second part of that I can't answer for you right now. But I can tell you, sure, it's certainly possible. The district could choose to bring transportation in-house. What that would mean is that we would then need to hire all the drivers. Those drivers would become BSEO members, and we would be bargaining wages and benefits. I will tell you that in most cases, school district benefits and pay are richer than private contractors. We would also need to purchase all of the equipment. So, and by equipment, I mean all the buses. We would need to assume all of the workers' comp insurance and transportation and liability insurance costs. Drivers do tend to be, drivers and food service workers tend to be among the more likely to be injured folks, just based on the statistics. And we would also have to have a depot to be able to store, a place to store and service all of our buses. So those would be considerations that we would need to do. It's not that it's impossible. I will tell you that more often, what you see is the other way around. You see school districts that are outsourcing for cost-saving purposes. Now, it is true that if we have drivers that, that work directly for the district, there is, at least presumably, some better control over what they're doing or not doing. But I will also tell you that a driver that sets up a sweetheart spot, a sweetheart stop for a family is likely going to do that whether they work for the school district or whether they work for a private contractor. So some of those kinds of things you end up, you know, dealing with regardless. But we would have to hire the management staff and all the drivers, and then we would be responsible for looking for those drivers right now as well. So it's all doable. If the board was interested in a full analysis on that, you know, if you direct me to do that, I will certainly start working on that, and we can consider that as, as an option. My, what I suspect is that that is likely going to add some cost onto our transportation network.
I mean, I would say it's not an option for what we're trying to decide right now. Can we just make sure we all agree to that?
Right.
Like, if you're going to do something like that, it would have to be a multi-year, you know, implementation and plan, so...
Another question that came up was if we would put out a bid and have another company, could we use our property that we're not using, like on Kelsey Road, as a bus depot? Or could we do that if, in light of electric buses and solar panels and things like that? Something to think about for the future, or the possibility to ask about that?
Absolutely, and that, that is an option that the, the board has. If you wanted to make property that we have available, you know, Kelsey Road would likely be the, you know, the obvious spot for that. That would limit, at least in part, your ability to be able to use that property for other purposes at some point. The, there would be some cost associated with being able to improve the property in order to support the bus storage as well as, you know, maintenance, repair bar on top of that. That certainly would be an option that would be available if the board were to so choose.
Just to iterate, they were interested in electric buses as well because of the lack of fumes when buses are sitting in front of schools, that that, that's a bad thing. And also, it also came up, a big, big discussion, like Katie was talking about, revisiting, maybe separate than buses, the whole middle school allocation system from elementary to middle. There was a lot of pros and cons to the way it is, you know, fairness, equity issues, unfairness, SEL issues about, you know, my neighbor, my best friend is going to the other middle school, you know, all those kinds of questions. Some schools are not 50/50. All that came up that perhaps we can find a time that that's appropriate to put that on our discussion time. And also that it might help the busing. And then the other suggestion that came up was, what about having, is it a cost-saving? And this is a little bit, this is buses, but not... An opt-out survey where if families don't want to use the bus, they can opt out to save us some money. But those, those PTO presidents thought that was a good idea.
We talked about that a little bit last time, right?
We did, yeah.
So I don't mean to...
I would love to...
But it's all transportation.
I, I would love for parents to, to let us know if they're not going to transport their, their students. We, what we find, though, when we ask parents, is that almost always, they choose to continue to be routed. They ask for their children to continue to be routed. And it's, it appears that the reason is that while they might normally drive their child or children to school, they know that there might be times when something's, something comes up, a work commitment, a personal commitment, medical appointment, and they're not able to do it. And they want to have that ability to fall back onto the bus that's routed by them as opposed not to. So we find that most of the time, when, when we ask, and actually, we've been for our small buses, now, it's probably about four weeks ago, we started making some of those calls. And again, we find that parents choose to continue to ask that their children remain routed on those buses. We do not have the ability to unilaterally unroute students. So if we were to look and say, well, we know that, you know, David Vine is not riding the bus, he hasn't ridden the bus all year, let's just send David's parents a letter saying, we're not going to route your student. Unfortunately, we are still obligated to transport students. There's not an exception pursuant to statute that allows us to say, if you don't show up, we're not going to transport you. So if we actually change our routes and buses around so that we're not routing those students, and then they show up at the bus stop, we're going to end up with a problem because we're obligated to transport them. So, so we, we don't think that we can just automatically unroute them.
Did it work last year, though? Did we reduce some routes?
Not, not by a lot.
Okay, so we didn't really reduce routes by doing that survey?
Nope.
Questionnaire.
Better inform the public, though, like, I don't know what the numbers might be, but we already know one route costs us, you know, upwards of $30,000 a year. You know, if, if we, we have the data likely, how many kids are not riding a bus on a daily basis could save us X number of routes? And maybe better communicate to the community that if you did opt out, then there could be a savings.
Yeah, at our, at our presentation, I believe Phil presented, is that we're having about 5,000 daily swipes on and off buses. And we're routing a little bit north of 6,000. I remember off the top of my head, it was a little bit north of 6,000 students that are routed. So the, the difference between those are the students who are, are not generally riding on our buses. We, we believe that if those students all were to say, we're opting out of transportation, that we would be able to have efficiencies, most certainly on time, possibly also on the number of routes. It's always that question on, on routes, it depends on the students and what the mix. It's sort of like, you know, if you, if we add 10 students into an elementary school, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to add a teacher, 20 students in. It doesn't mean we add a teacher, because they, they might be spread all the way, you know, K through 5, and it's a two or three per grade level, and it, it doesn't add enough in any one classroom to put us over the edge. Same thing with bus routes. If you take one or two students... Same thing with bus routes. If you take one or two students off of every stop, it's probably not enough to get rid of a, of, of a bus route. Now, if they all happen to be in one neighborhood or several neighborhoods, now we're talking, and we can, you know, more likely save some time and potentially eliminate some routes.
What I'm hearing is, you know, some operational things that we can look at to play into this. I think the decision point tonight is about, are, are we interested in bidding, going out to bid or not? And I, and I believe some of these broader conversations can happen as we, as we move forward.
And I would even recommend even maybe, I don't know, somehow we've been into our strategic plan conversations too, because all these conversations that have been raised are kind of long-term, you know, longer implementation things.
For sure.
Multi-year.
Is it possible, though, to ask, you know, what's the cost of bringing on one electric?
Absolutely.
This is too old, and we're gonna get a new bus?
With an alternate?
Yeah, say hey.
Going in with an alternate?
You know, when the buses are old, what's?
Even with a negotiation, we could talk about a certain number.
Right. And BTC would be thinking about, okay, if, if we, if we buy some electric buses, we have to have the charging equipment that's associated with that.
Right.
So that's a part of it, but, you know, I, I can absolutely, if I, if I'm negotiating with them on a renewal, I absolutely will do that, and, and we'll see where, you know, what, what results from that, and, and I can share that information back, and we'll see if we can make some movement in that direction.
Really, negotiating with them gives you more flexibility than just asking them to bid with other people bidding also, right? We have a little more give and take, is that right?
Negotiating with, right, negotiating with them gives us flexibility to have conversations around our existing contract and, and future pricing. Bidding gives us the ability to set whatever bid specs we want. And now there's, there's a whole section of game theory that, that comes into play as you start to think about what are the strategies that bidders will take in trying to win a bid? And, and a market like ours where there's rising costs, one obvious bidder who's been here for decades that has particular advantages, what's the strategy around that bidder as opposed to other bidders that are coming in? So it ends up getting a little complicated in terms of how that plays out. And so I, I have a lot of uncertainty as exactly what the results of that are. But from a risk perspective, I think that we are at a lower risk of significant cost increases right at this point in time if we negotiate.
Well, there's a, there's a reasonableness element to this, right? If the, if the negotiation doesn't pan out to a reasonable solution, bidding may have to become an option.
So how does the board feel?
I'm prone to go Dr. Vine's recommendation.
Let's go for a renewal.
Thank you, board. I will work on it, and I will report back.
If Dr. Vine only come and I'll make his, I would, you know, given the, given the unique market dynamics today with, you know, supply, I'm sorry, but not supply, driver shortages, and, you know, what I would call abnormally high energy costs. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would prefer a shorter, a shorter term renewal, and then possibly revisiting next year, and I know that creates more work. But potentially, if there's, you know, changes in that, that might behoove us. But I guess ultimately I'll leave it to you on, you know, how best to address that, because potentially, if there's, they're willing to give more with a longer term, perhaps that's a.
There's, there's a couple of ways to do that. Sometimes it's optional. Okay, we'll do a one-year or a two-year with an option for a second or third. And so there are ways to structure that, that maybe we can thread the needle, which would be part of my approach.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
I think I heard consensus on us wanting to see what alternate sustainable options look like, right? Is that?
Yeah, I heard that.
Electric, okay.
But I would also add to, if we want BTC to invest in sustainable options, they're going to want more than a one-year contract to do that.
We don't need to negotiate.
Yep.
No, no.
I, I will work on behalf of the board and our community to try and come up with the best deal possible for you. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just point out that there are a couple of resolutions around clean energy and, and electric busing. So please take a look at those.
Can you give us those numbers, Sandra, so we can?
Eleven and twelve. Why'd we start? Peter's done. Okay, let's see. So what's our next topic is mitigation?
I also add that maybe we do want to go back and look at how the decision was made prior to station.
Yeah.
Because I, because I, I remember the referendum, I think it was about twenty years ago. And to get that to pass, we had to make sure that everybody had an equal opportunity at both schools. And at the time, the new school was looked at as a little nicer than the station. So, I mean, there's a reason why it was done that way, and we might want to share with, you know, the board members why we did it that way to explain. And maybe we don't have that same reason now, so it's, it's obsolete. But back then, it was crucial. I don't think we would have passed a referendum without that back then.
Understood. Let's, let me, can I add that to our list of maybe things that we want to bring up or not bring up? I just, I'm, I just wanna, I want to make sure we get through this first.
No, no, no.
Is that okay?
I'm just commenting on what people said.
Okay, so COVID mitigation update is next.
Yeah, so last month meeting, the board asked me to bring back, or at least initiate the conversation regarding mitigations, data, matrix, things that we had looked at in the summer when we were considering, you know, making local decisions regarding the mitigation strategies. And really, what I've, I've gathered is, just brought some of that information back for you to refresh, share with you, you know, that work, and really open it up to conversation. So when we were looking and talking about mitigations and evaluating, we kind of narrowed in or focused in on a couple of data sources. So if, if we look at those at that time, we looked at CDC community transmission thresholds. Instead of using the CDC data matrix, we use the Northwestern data matrix, where we took the counties that made up our school district, we plugged those numbers in, and then we kind of used that matrix as a driver. I think at the time, we, we used the, the moderate definition as a place to start looking at or opening the door for a reduction in mitigation. And I think it's real important to say, we're having this conversation in preparation. Nothing has changed right now, but just, you know, starting to prepare for, for what may lie ahead.
We might need to say that three more times.
Yeah. So we, and we also talked about vaccination rates at that time. So just to refresh you on what that information looked like, here is the CDC dashboard, the levels of community transmission. They had four categories, low to high, and it was basically based on the new cases per one hundred thousand. I believe if you kind of recall back in July, we were in that moderate range when we were having the conversations. And if you go to the next slide, you will see, if you look at our case count per hundred and twenty, or per a hundred thousand, we're now at a hundred and twenty-three. So flip back to the CDC for me. So if you plug in that one hundred and twenty-three, you'll see where we currently fall in terms of high transmission. So the, the goal of, of what we created was to utilize this initial data source as a matrix. And when we fell into moderate transmission, use that then as a driver to potentially look at reducing or removing mitigations. Go ahead to the third slide for me.
Sorry, at that point, do you have to get below one percent positivity rate to be in anything other than high? No. Well, we're at a one point six seven positivity rate right now, but we're considered high transmission.
Because of the number of new cases?
Because we're at a hundred and twenty-three. I'm saying, what, what positivity rate are you at when you're to be low?
The answer is yes, Katie. One percent would be a hundred.
You have to be, you have to be under one percent.
Yeah, one percent would be a hundred.
Thank you. Sorry.
Which we were, we, we were at in August.
Okay.
Yes. So again, that's the Northwestern, and when we look at this, you know, in terms of removal of mitigation strategy, I think we have to balance this with quarantine. As we kind of went through this in July, the quarantine measures changed a little bit, and it moved to a place where universal masking was tied to close contact and tied to tests to stay. So i- in, in creating a matrix, we have to keep that in mind. So if we're in, let's just say, moderate or low, and we want to move to situational masking, but quarantine requirements don't change, we run the risk of eliminating our ability to use tests to stay and increasing the number of students that are on quarantine. So I wanted to restate that. So from a, a starting point and a framework, I wanted to share that data and that information today, open it up if you have any additional inputs or thoughts, or whether this is the direction the board feels makes sense and, and if and when we get to that point, to utilize this as a, as our starting point and entry point to evaluating mitigation strategies.
This is only something we could potentially implement if the mandate was lifted, though, right? The, the governor's mandate.
Correct.
Okay. So it doesn't really have immediate applicability.
So there's the second time you repeated that, so.
The second time, the second time.
Yeah, and I, I think what was asked of me was, bring the conversation back around so we can at least begin the conversation to be prepared when that occurs.
Okay, so if that occurs, do we have to stick to these? Do we have to follow these levels? I mean, I, I find that, I find that to be.
Which levels? I want to make sure I'm sorry.
Zero through ten cases, ten through fifty, I mean.
Isn't that the CDC definition?
But do we, is it a recommendation, or is it something we have?
No, this is, this is totally locally driven. These are our decisions. Again, going back to the summer, asked to create a matrix, demonstrate how we would kind of move forward with reduction in mitigation. Obviously, masking was the big mitigation strategy at that point. This is what we used. I'm bringing this back, you know, forward is, okay, if we're going to build this out, does this make sense? Is it moderate transmission kind of the goal where we'd start to trigger these things as a starting point for this conversation?
So I think, Katie, what you're trying to get at, though, is, you know, how would we as a board then define where we feel comfortable, right? Is that kind of what you're getting at? Because the CDC is giving us guidance.
Yeah.
Or, or I take it back. We have selected the CDC to provide a guideline. But for us, I mean, where do we feel, I mean, do we feel this is appropriate? Do we feel this is inappropriate? Marcia's not here anymore, but she had, she had made the point about what's our end game? And are, are we in a position to kind of say, you know, once we hit point five percent or one percent or whatever that rate is, that's when we ultimately feel comfortable? Again, assuming the EO is lifted. But is that, when, when do we feel comfortable removing the mask mandate from our schools?
I think that's the conversation we're having right now, right?
Right, right, exactly.
But is, is, where do we feel? And there, there are other data points that you feel like we should consider. Is vaccination rate something we should talk about and consider? Whether that be for students and staff? Is, or is this kind of what is going to serve as our guide and our driver?
Well, I, I guess my first question to you is, Dr. Hunt, do you have a recommendation? Or is the CDC your recommendation?
I, this was my recommendation in July, honestly. I, I, I don't have a recommendation where we stand today with high transmission, universal masking. There, to me, there's almost too many questions. If you, if you, if you're just talking about numbers and a reduction in mitigation, it's a whole nother sep- separate conversation when you add the definitions of quarantine currently. Do I want to do anything that is going to send more kids home and in quarantine? Answer is no. So.
Right.
I honestly think.
So that's our number one goal, right? Our number one goal is to keep the kids in school.
I, I think a recommendation is premature at this point, because we don't know if the EO is going to be lifted when, when kids five and up can be fully vaccinated for two months or for two weeks or not at all. So we just, we don't know any of that. But I think it's good to keep this in mind for the eventuality when the EO is lifted. So I understand why we're revisiting this, but I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily need a recommendation.
We're not making any decisions tonight, and we're not making any decisions.
I maybe have to remember where we were a year ago. I mean, we have our kids in school. Yes, they're wearing masks. I know there's, you know, a lot of population that's not happy about that. But we have our kids in school, and that was our goal this summer. And I think we've done a pretty good job. I'm not looking for a pat on the back. I think there's better things we can be doing, but, but we have the kids in school, safely in school.
So I don't know of anything besides this that we could go by at this point in time? So I think it's a reasonable thing to continue to, to, to consider this.
I do remember the CDC recommended universal masking once an area hit substantial or high transmission. That was a word of summer.
But we have to have something to measure again, so it's.
I mean, but the reality is, we're one of six states that still have a mask mandate, one of six. So they're just, other states are not doing this. So personally, and I'm not, I, I guess I feel by January, when we come back, every one five and older who wants to be vaccinated, at that point, will have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. When we voted to go mask optional, six through twelve, that was our threshold. It was because they had the opportunity to be vaccinated. And we said, you know, we will relook at this one children when it, it gets down the line. So I, I, we have to have an off-ramp. We, we just, like, zero COVID is impossible. That's never going to happen. It's, it's never going to happen.
Anybody's saying we're.
So, but I'm saying, like, at a certain point, given, and we're no longer under executive order after six hundred and some days, we need to take control back of our district and make some decisions. And I'm going to say to you personally, come Jan- I would like to do it now, we all know that. Come January, I don't know what more we could possibly keep doing once everyone who wants to have, has a chance to be vaccinated is vaccinated.
So, so, so vaccination is something that Dr. Hunt asked if that's something we would want to have be a factor?
I don't, I don't think it should be rate of vaccination, because I don't think everyone's going to do it for their children.
I think just the number, the percentage of vaccinated. So, so for me, like, if, if you told me we were at in low transmission, but we had a vaccination rate of point five, you know, I might feel different about lifting mitigation than if we had a higher vaccination rate. So I think vaccination rate is a, is a data point that's important. It's for us to understand.
Yeah, but I, I think what Katie's saying, so correct or wrong, Katie, is, and I, and I kind of hear what you're saying, and if I'm hearing the other board members correctly, it sounds like you are in agreement. COVID's not going away. It's, it's a matter of saying, do we believe, albeit the CDC is saying, you know, one percent is high, high transmission and half percent is substantial? I mean, at what point do we say, you know what, even though the CDC says it's substantial, you know, we acknowledge that this is probably going to be the rate on a go-forward basis? I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know that we're there yet, but I guess the question is, Dr. Hunt, please tell me if I'm not asking the right question. I'm trying to reiterate your question that you were asking is, what kinds of things would we want to use for measures? And this is one. This is one data point would be to use these community transmission levels as a measure.
Correct.
Right? I'm not saying that we, what we're doing at yellow, blue, orange, and red, but this is something we can use.
Correct.
Right? Another thing we can use would be the vaccination rate.
Or minimum vaccination ability, right? The availability of vaccinations.
Or availability, availability, yes.
But I'm going to also just point out one more time. We already voted to go mask optional, six through twelve, without having any of this in place.
The situation's changed. And the situation keeps changing.
Well, that was.
I don't. It was pre-Delta. That, that was, that's how I would comment, but I'm not saying that we're not going to go back there. We very well could go right back there. But we, but we did look at this as well, right? We looked at this matrix in making that decision as well.
You know, I'm not, I'm not an expert here, but are there other respectable bodies similar to the CDC that have given definitions of what, what appropriate levels of community spread out, community transmission are?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean they don't exist.
Okay.
I mean, something else that we threw out was not just looking at community, but looking at the individual schools. What's the percentage of positivity in the school? And, I mean, for example, perhaps if we were using that data, Roslyn Road last week would have either closed or said, well, we were mask optional. Now you all have to wear masks for the next, you know, month because of the positive.
We would have changed the mitigation.
That's actually.
So they're using local, using local data to.
Really interesting, actually.
To, to drive things.
The issue there is, you don't have every student tested.
No, and that's, right.
That's where the issue comes.
But at least you have positive tests, right? If it's systematic, you can't really track anyways.
Well, you can with your, your shield testing, right?
With shield testing, you can.
Provided they don't, but that's provided they don't opt out.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know, I, I forget what the number you quoted is, Dr. Hunt, the number of students that are doing it on a month, is it semi-month? Or, I'm sorry, is it every two weeks?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Dr. Fuller, we brought that up this week. It was two thousand opt-outs, is that about right? Opted out of shield testing.
I thought we only have two thousand opting in.
So, okay, so.
So that's another thing we could consider, so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So shield testing would be another thing we could consider, this matrix. Or something like this would be another thing we consider. Vaccination rates would be another thing we can consider. The availability of vaccines.
We could throw this completely out and just use our dashboard, quite honestly. If you want to, if you want to make it totally local on the data that we have in front of us, I mean, you could run the cases per hundred thousand based on zip code. The, you know, when, when we talked about shield. You know, when, when we talked about shield testing way back when, it was hopefully at a very high percentage, and it would really drive what we needed to do in terms of mitigation.
Sure.
You know, I can't say that we have that pervasive, you know, you know, level of engagement with our students right now, but if we want to use that data to draw conclusions, we can build it that way. And really, it's built, we just go, we go on our district dashboard, and we're.
Right, so you could use that to measure against this, though, to see, like, so, let's just, I don't know, how I pick on Roslin Road. Let's just say one school is red, and all the other schools are blue, then you would behave differently at that one school?
I think the tricky business is, we've got kids from families at all different schools. Like, we've got, you know, families who have somebody at Roslin Station and BHS, and we've got families who have, you know, kids at Prairie, BHS, and, you know, Rose. So, you've got this co-mingling in this community. And I also don't want to, you know, disregard the families that have emailed the board this week saying, keep the mask mandate in. Masking is one of the easiest strategies and proven effective strategies when there's a low vaccination rate, which, which we don't know what our vaccination rate's going to be, right?
Again, let's go back to what do we want to, is vaccination rate something that's important for us to know?
I think it is.
I think it is.
And testing, because right now, universal masking is allowing us to test to stay.
Right.
Right? So, I think, I think that.
Can I ask, for information purpose, parents cannot opt out of test to stay, is that right? You, you had either.
Yes, they can.
Or they can, and their kids can stay in the schools?
No, then they're quarantined.
Oh, then they're out of the school. So, so to stay, they have to, okay, I just want to make sure. That's what I thought, but I, because a couple of the Roslin letters said, how come kids are opting out of test to stay? But then they're not in the school if they're opting out.
Right, right.
Okay.
You're given that, even if you've opted out of shield testing, we give them the opportunity to participate in test to stay.
To stay in the school.
To stay in the school.
Okay.
And if they do not want to do that, then they have to quarantine.
But I mean, if, if the quarantine mandate drops also, or I'm sorry, the exclusion mandate drops also, then we can return the business of quarantine back to the Health Department, and we don't have to be in the business of it anymore. We can just implement test to stay.
Depends on how all of this plays out.
Right. So, I mean, there's many factors that can go into this, too. I mean, the fact is, vaccinated or not, you're still transmitting it, you can still catch it. I really don't know how we're ever going to get our numbers down to an acceptable level.
They were down, they were down in July, so.
Yeah, but seasonal, I mean, so it's, it's, it's going to go, I mean, it's.
We're heading into winter.
Yeah, so it's just, it is what it is at some point.
Well, my fear in bringing this back to the board was, quite honestly, there's, there's a lot of unknowns right now.
So many unknowns.
I mean, the, good, you know, the vaccination availability is a step forward, that people now have the opportunity to do that and make that choice. Maybe this conversation is premature based on kind of what we know today. What I, what I'm hearing you say is tracking things locally, continuing with shield testing, and, you know, we've got nurses, staff working diligently on looking up vaccination status, so we have a good number, continuing with that work, so the board has good percentages there. Maybe the best thing we can do right now until more clarity on our ability to make these decisions comes, comes to fruition.
And it sounds like there's some interest in at least seeing if there's any alternatives to this, 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 this matrix. It's one other thing I heard.
But also, our level of community transmission with increased vaccination availability could go down, too. So, I mean, that could help mitigation, too, so.
Okay, Katie, I mean, so I guess maybe we're not ready today with even, and I'm not saying recommendation, I'm just saying even just a guideline, but we do need to develop some sort of endgame. I think whether it's the vaccination rates, whether it's vaccination availability, I'm not, I'm actually not sure how to define that, right? Is it just the fact that it's available from 5 to 11, or is it?
Or has been available for a long enough time.
Yeah, I don't know.
So that kids can be fully vaccinated.
Right, so I don't know what that means yet, but maybe it's that.
Even regardless of personal opinions.
Sure.
Masking versus unmasking, the reality of what the quarantine rules play into what would be my recommendation on that answer. If I know I'm going to lose hundreds of kids.
Right, agreed.
Into quarantine, regardless of how I feel about masking, I'd want to keep that universal masking in place to ensure we can test to stay and have as much flexibility to keep as many kids in school as possible.
So, how about in a scenario where it is optional? So, is.
What is optional? What is it?
Masking.
Okay.
My apologies. So, let's just say you're at a table, at a lunch table or a pod in your classroom, with three children, two are masked, one is unmasked. Is the child who's still masked with the child who had COVID or got tested positive, is that child still eligible to test to stay? No.
I think both people have to be masked.
Both.
Universal masking.
It is universal.
Yeah, universal.
Is there ever a scenario where test to stay becomes in our control, and we can say, we're going to test to stay all children, because we want all healthy children in school? Is that, is that, is that ever been a possibility?
So that we.
Not with the current exclusion.
But prior to that.
Maybe when that, maybe when the exclusion goes away.
Yeah, I mean, because that would be my ideal world, would be we, any student can test to stay, period.
Whether they're outside of school or inside of school.
Yeah.
Right.
Meaning, let's keep healthy kids in school. Let's test to stay everyone, because, and if they have COVID, they go home, if they don't, they get to go to school.
So, that would be our shield, though, right? Not our test, we could use our shield for that, right?
We use shield for test to stay currently when we can.
Okay.
But we can't, but there's stipulations right now. If your, if your mask is off, you can't test to stay.
I understand, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get to where you are.
There's still a significant number of parents who've decided they don't want their kids shielded, you know.
Right, so we have so many opting out.
So, I mean, we would need more universal testing to feel good about making that decision.
So, 20.
Would be statistically relevant.
2678, 2,678 students opt out.
So, we're still getting a good number of kids in, though. I mean, that's kind of like six, seven, right?
It's more, more than a quarter of our students. It's about a third of our students.
I guess I thought it was the opposite. I thought it was about how many tested.
I thought it was two initially, but it sounds like it's 6,000 approximately kids.
That's the number.
6,000 kids are tested currently.
So, two-thirds are testing, and about, approximately.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a big number.
So, that's significant, right?
But you might want to, if we're going to go to local to even the school, we might need to understand that number per school, too.
Which we have here, don't we?
Yeah, we can pull that. Why don't we flip this, and I'll look at something more district up?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Good.
Good discussion.
And just to reiterate, nothing has changed. This is just for the future.
This is just discussion.
This is just, just for the future.
And thank you for that number three.
Number three. I had to hit your three.
I think I predicted it, but there we go. So, thank you for that. And thank you for everybody for sticking with us. So, next up is to talk about our agenda items for November 16th, and I have two things that to add on to that. So, if you can pull that up for us, Janine. I know we've got some actions coming up.
I'm sorry, can I just, I don't mean to nitpick, but like, Dr. Hunt, in your update, your superintendent update, this week we tested 2,779 students. That's what it says. So, where are we getting 6,000?
I don't know if we pulled that.
Steve's got an answer.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I can explain it from a high school level, so students that are vaccinated, that we know are vaccinated, we know that allow our vaccine.
Well, that's what I'm.
That's right.
Are not allowed to test.
Right now.
They do not test for shield. So, that might have helped.
So, and that was a change from what we discussed at the beginning of the year.
I can answer that, but it was like a last-minute shift, was that correct, Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Did that have to do with, had to do with the availability of the tests a little bit, or?
A little bit.
Especially then we're looking at about half of the eligible kids are opting out of shield testing.
They're not opting out, they're.
Some are opting out. No, I'm not talking about the ones who are vaccinated. I'm saying, if we're only testing 2,000, there's 2,000 that are not testing, that's about half the kids. That would be eligible for shield testing, are not taking part in it.
It sounds like 50%, basically, because it's 2,700 versus 2,600, right?
Yeah. So, it's just hard to get good data if you have half the people not testing, you really don't have good data.
Do we know how many students are eligible for shield testing?
We just talked about, that's what I just said.
So, we know it's like 6,000?
No, no, it's 26 or 2700.
Well, 2,700 have been shield tested.
And he said about 2,600 are opting out.
2,600 are opting out, and the rest have been vaccinated, so they, they are not eligible to test. Is that right?
Yeah, it's probable. It sounds like it's a third, a third.
One-third, 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 okay. So, you have about 30% of our students vaccinated.
Yeah, okay. Maybe. Right? Okay. Okay, so agenda items for November 16th. So, we have actions on the levy, our resolutions that we've been talking about.
Yes.
Air purifier systems through ESER funds. And then we have discussion items for strategic planning update, Illinois report card update, Bill 220, bring your hard hat for Huff and Sunny Hill, and the ISV waivers and e-learning plan, discussion items.
Could we revisit when Katie and I had our tutorial from Dr. Vine about the levy? Remember, both of us were like, oh, if only you could make a short video about how it works, like on Instagram, so more of our, our community could understand the tax levy increase and how it's tied to CPI and things like that? Is there, could we revisit maybe Samantha partnering with Dave to potentially explain it with some cool graphics or something like that?
Certainly, and I will, I will be doing a presentation for you at the next meeting, which will also be live-streamed and available for our committee members to be able to, to view at any time.
We were thinking like a bite-size, like 60-second. This is actually what happens. It's not the school board arbitrarily increasing your taxes.
Okay, so.
Believe it or not, he does do that. This is presentation, he does do that.
So, something we could like tweet out.
Yes, we can. We've tweeted out the, we grabbed a clip, right, of, of that part of the presentation and put that out?
You could even be a TikTok star. Oh, my God.
I'll work on my dance.
The levy dance.
Okay, anything else that we're going to add?
If you do have a, the auditor, there'll be auditor recommendation, which came out of today's finance committee meetings, the auditor contract. And I'd like to also bring a disposal of equipment, disposal of surplus property board action, which we periodically do when we have stuff.
That'll be in the consent.
Yeah.
What was the first thing you said?
Recommendation on the auditor contract.
That would be an action, right?
Yep.
Do we need to talk about board needs for the levy or not at this point? Is that something you can figure out?
Well, I had that on my list here to bring up was December 21st, based on that discussion. So, December 21st is the last day before, is the last day of school before, after winter break, right? So, I just want to make sure that we actually would have a forum if we met on that night, and, and if we had things we were going to need to discuss on that night. But it sounds like one thing we would need to discuss is voting on levy, right?
Yes, if, if you wanted a different date, the night of the 16th, which is a Thursday night, prior to that, if you wanted to have a, a meeting that was a special meeting just to do, talk about the levy, you know, have a, be a quick meeting.
14th is, 14th is too close.
That's correct. That's only 28 days out, we need 30.
That's what he was just asking. 16th would be there.
There's often an option for the, for the board, if you were looking to have a slimmed down agenda, that would be a possibility that works with the levy timing.
I could do that, I don't know.
It's the last day, so the, the kids will be out of school that night.
Okay.
I think we also have a, yeah, we've got a couple bids, Huff and Sunny Hill bid approvals.
On the 21st.